There we go. Awesome. Hello, Commissioners. Good evening, Portland, and welcome everyone to this meeting of the Independent District Commission. I hope everyone is staying hydrated and cool and safe during this heat. Today is Wednesday, August 16th. We will be meeting virtually by Zoom, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., as well as in person here at the Portland Building downtown. It's good to see all of you in person. Before we get started, I will hand things over to city staff to go over our Zoom meeting logistics.
Thank you, Commissioner Laurenti. So for everyone, this meeting is being recorded and we'll post a copy of the recording on the Independent District Commission's website under past meetings and events. Today, we have closed captioning, American Sign Language, and Spanish interpretation available. You can access those on your Zoom control panel at the bottom right. Commissioners, this is your reminder to change your Zoom chat setting to everyone so folks listening along can follow along with the conversation. And then lastly, community members, you can submit questions or thoughts through our Zoom Q and A that's on the bottom left of your Zoom control panel. That will be part of the public meeting record. But if you have additional questions, please feel free to submit those to our email at districtcommission@portlandoregon.com.
Thank you, Sophia. Before going over our agenda for today's meeting, I first want to take a moment to welcome City Attorney Linley Reese today. Linley is joining us to support and provide advice on certain elements of our agenda today. So I just want to do a quick moment here to say welcome and thank you for being here for our last couple of meetings. Thank you, Linley. So for our meeting today, after we're done with commission business, we will spend time revisiting and reviewing the latest version of the Alder map. And during this portion of our agenda, we'll have time to review additional data and information that we've requested of Flow Analytics. During this time, we're going to ask Commissioners to clearly identify any additional proposed revisions or concerns with the map. And we'll have a flat time as well to discuss any of those revisions. And by the end of this agenda item, our hope is to vote on any additional revisions to the latest version of the Alder map. Once we are ready and done with the revisions of the map, we will move towards a vote to adopt the map component of the formal district plan. From there, we'll have a quick 10-minute break. And then we'll have a discussion on the numbering of the districts together with City Attorney Linley Reese, who will be here to provide additional context and background and answer any of the questions that Commissioners might have with regard to the numbering of districts. From there, we'll have a discussion around the documenting of the process, outlining next steps for ourselves in the final preparation of the final report. And we'll also have a discussion around the mapping rationale and forming answers to our most frequently asked questions in this process. Any questions before we get started with today's agenda? Hearing none, over to you, Autumn.
Thank you. So we, for commission business, there are no excused absences today. And we will have meeting minutes from August 2nd to vote on. So I assume you've already reviewed them. And just as a note, we will have the minutes for the last, for the meetings from last week, August 9th and this week, August 16th, ready and prepared for next week's meeting, which is, which will be the last for the commission. So those both should be approved then. All right. So for the August 2nd meeting, are there any proposed revisions to those minutes? Or any questions? Okay, seeing none, those are approved. And that concludes commission business there. But we are going to walk through a review of the August mapping motions that were passed. That side's perfect. Thank you. So this is really, this, this portion of the meeting really is to just encapsulate all the decisions that have been made in this month as you've been reviewing and arriving on your decision around the current consideration maps. So two meetings ago, on August 2nd, the commission voted, made a motion to and passed a vote to suspend the use of the Cedar map as an active map for consideration. Last week, August 9th, three motions passed. I walked through each of them. So the commission voted to eliminate the use of the Maple map and use the Alder map, version four of Alder, as the sole base map for consideration. The next motion had specifically focused on the revised version of Alder, Alder IV, and had a change to the boundary from south to south that impacted the Southeast District and the Outer East District with Mill and Market Southeast to Southeast Division Street. We're going to actually walk through that one with a little more detail, but I just wanted to note it that pass as well. And then the final one was to, in this meeting, vote on a revised, vote to adopt a revised Alder map. And we do have some amendments to the formal voting process. We're still going to vote on that map, but we will walk through that later this meeting as well. Next slide, please. So just going to walk through, I won't brief, I won't go through each of these because the first four we covered last week, but we'll briefly run through them. These are the revisions to the map that we started with as the base, if you consider the earlier Alder draft map that came out of June and into July and the current version. So just to review the first four, those were, those were adjusted and decided prior to last week. So the first one impacted the Sunderland neighborhood west of northeast 33rd Avenue, west of PDX Airport. And so it essentially had the area of northeast 33rd Avenue from Columbia River to the Slough, changing to East District. And that was under, so that was taken under advisement with the city. Number two, had the boundary between Roseway and Cully neighborhoods, and it impacted two census blocks and shifting between the southeast to, from the southeast to the north northeast district. The next one was Ardenwall Johnson Creek neighborhood that was impacted. And there were areas south of Southeast Harney, changing from the West District to the blue teal one. And it impacted a single census block as well. And then the fourth one impacted the Brooklyn neighborhood, and that really extended a, that, there was an area that was bounded by Southeast Holgate Boulevard, McLaughlin, and a rail yard. And that was mostly an error. So that was corrected. But last week, we walked through adjusting the Montevilla and Jade District. So this was the one I was talking about before. And then to summarize that area, there was an area that was bounded by Southeast Market and Southeast Mill on the north side, Southeast 82nd on the west, Southeast Division to the south, and I-205 to the east. That changed from the Eastern District, which is green, to the Southeast District, which is teal. And the rationale, just as a reminder, was that that would keep Montevilla together while also keeping the Jade District, honoring established Jade District boundaries that were established in consultation with members of community and organizations. That kind of gets us up to speed with where we are in terms of map considerations. Next slide. And are there any questions on that item? We will have, so there was, there was another question that was up, that was under consideration as a follow-up with the city planning, with the city planning group. Commissioner Vanceickel Robbins will walk us through that. And it was separate from this first one we walked through, but still it impacted that same area around the airport. So we'll discuss that as well later, a little bit later in the session and get an update there. Right. If there are no questions on the changes, we're going to go to Alex to update y'all on the data and information requests that were made. Alex?
Yeah, thanks, Autumn. Well, honestly, I think I need to, yeah, see this slide. There we go. So we'll go over some of this information that was requested at the end of last Wednesday's meeting. Specifically, it was surrounding voting data, registered voters, and voting information from the November 8th, 2022 election, specifically about the neighborhoods around Sellwood, East Moreland, the areas that would be east of the Willemette, but part of the West District if using the older version format. So what we're looking at here is a table of registered voters, then who voted, and those that did not, and their percentages. On the right side, though, the, the last column, you can see that the percent of voters for the Sellwood, Moreland, East Moreland, Reed, Ardenwall, Johnson Creek neighborhood organizations, it's 15.9% if they're part of District One in the Alder IV map. And then although not shown, what it's saying up top is if that area was put into the District Three, the Maple version three map, they would represent 15% of the voters in that district. So basically, they're the same within a percentage. And that makes sense because remember, we're balancing total population amongst the districts. So when you move this one area or this group of neighborhoods from one district to the other, depending on if you're looking at Alder IV or Maple III, total population, when we're looking at it at this scale, kind of is pretty representative of registered voters and who ended up voting in that election. So that's why we're kind of pretty close within 1%. If any Commissioners had any questions or wanted me to elaborate on that more, I could. Otherwise, I'll leave it there.
I don't see any questions, Alex. And are there any other data requests that we just, that didn't get covered? Did we miss anything?
I don't believe so. We covered the, some of the socioeconomic data requests last week. This was one that resulted at the end of last week's meeting, and I know that we have more data to show based on voter turnout. But that will come up later when we're talking about the numbering of districts.
Commissioner Vanceickel Robbins, would you be able to update us on the follow-up nation request as it relates to that area around Northeast Lombard, Lombard and Columbia Boulevard on the airport?
Yes. So Sophia and I talked with Steve Kuntz, who's the, one of the senior economic planners at the Planning Bureau. And he was the one who was concerned about whether we could make this change. And it was the one I talked about last week that we were a little unclear about his little drawing here. And so after talking with him, basically, what they're trying to do is have us avoid arbitrarily splitting the industrial districts surrounding the airport by moving the, so what they had actually wanted was for us to move the boundary from 33rd, which is where, right now, where you see the green and yellow split, move it to 17th, which, what is, I think, 17th? And move the southern boundary down to Columbia Boulevard, all the way between 17th to 82nd. And their rationale for doing this is that this proposed map adjustment would straddle the industry and residential buffer of transitional general employment zoning along the rail corridor, which supports land use compatibility for residents to the south and industry to the north. And the map adjustment has minimal impact on district population size because Portland's industrial and general employment zoning doesn't allow housing. And any housing in this area is considered non-conforming, and it was essentially grandfathered in when the, when the zoning was done. And the adjustment also aligns with studies that show significant employment in these industrial areas along the Columbia Corridor by East Portland residents. So the folks who live in the East Portland District we're, we've drawn are very large components of the workers in the industrial areas in this Columbia Corridor. So that's why they thought it made sense for that to be in the district where the workers largely reside. So changing the western boundary, if we do exactly what they asked and change that western boundary all the way over to 17th, that actually, it's kind of near the western edge of the Sunderland neighborhood, and it alters the district population by over 900, which is not insignificant in the, in the scheme of things when we're at the 5% like cusp. If we leave the western boundary at 33rd, but move the southern boundary down to northeast Columbia, that only alters population by about 200. So that's much more manageable in what we're trying to do balancing the population. And when we were talking with him, we, we mentioned that it may not be possible to do both of the boundary changes. And I sensed he was more interested in moving it down to Columbia as much as we could than moving it out to what is essentially a slew over toward 17th. And one of the reasons for the big population difference is because there are about 500 inmates at the correctional facility in that area in the Sunderland neighborhood. So that's the rationale for that particular change.
We'll have an opportunity to deliberate the potential revisions to the map. Before we do that, I did also want to walk through how we'd be, how to be adopting the kind of revision to the process for adopting the maps. But are there any questions regarding this potential revision?
Yeah, I have a question. The slide here shows an area that's marked out that goes all the way to 82nd Avenue. So I'm a little confused. Are we talking about only a change in the Sunderland neighborhood, or are we talking about changes also in the Cully neighborhood?
They are asking for a change in Cully, actually. Cully, the Cully neighborhood boundary extends north of Columbia Boulevard to where we have it currently drawn in, this is actually his drawing, but that's where we currently have the boundary. And the, the challenge is that these are very weird census blocks in that, in that area that he wants to add. So there's really no, no census block that lets you know it. So we either have to go all the way to Columbia, or he even suggested he'd, he'd like us to go all the way to Lombard, which would take even more of Cully. And I, I told him maybe Columbia, and that's what we talk about tonight, whether we could do that or not.
Well, I, I, maybe others heard testimony about how the Cully neighborhood wanted, the people in the Cully neighborhood wanted to keep their neighborhood whole, and in particular, concerns about the safety issues around Columbia Boulevard, that they were wanting to have defined Commissioners to address that issue. And dividing Columbia Boulevard is, down the middle, was problematic for them. And there are organizations like the Native American Youth and Family Center that are on the north side of Columbia Boulevard that are strongly connected to the southern part of Columbia Boulevard through their programming. They have a major Cully Indigenous Arts Corridor under construction that connects right to the Native American Youth and Family Center. Several affordable housing developments that are connected right to the center. So I, I would say making this kind of a change this late date would be problematic for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Chisholm, followed by Commissioner Fleischman, followed by followed by Commissioner Manhadas.
And just to confirm, this is the, this adjustment is available at Districtor?
True that.
There's a, there's a map on Districtor that it says Alder IV with Columbia Boulevard change.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I share Commissioner Lumley's concern about, and one of the things we heard early on, a lot of us had maps that were along Columbia Boulevard. It seemed like what was simple and easy and obvious way to draw a boundary around the airport. And then we heard from folks in Cully that they really wanted to be able to have both sides of the Columbia Boulevard in, in one district so that it is an opportunity for accountability with the city council members. Another thought I have is that by doing that, we started taking a group of people that are south of the airport, connecting them to a part of the, of the, of a district that they actually don't have a transportation link to. The only way through is through the, the fence of the airport, I think. So it strikes me that this, despite the, the suggestion from the planners, that seems to fit better with the North Portland folks than the, than the East Portland folks.
Thank you, Commissioner Chisholm. Commissioner Fleischman, followed by Commissioner Manhadas.
Yes, thanks. I, I, I also support the comments from Commissioner Lumley and Commissioner Chisholm that this, this change comes a little, comes a little late. I appreciate the Planning Bureau giving us this information, very much so, because we did engage them and they, they, they did come up with some ideas. It just seems to me that it reflects more kind of a planning perspective than perhaps a citizen representation perspective. And I think we're charged with, with being responsive. Oddly, I, I know, I know some residents in, in this area and I, having not known, I have no idea where, what their preference would be. But again, I would want to know that before I decided this, because it isn't, this is not purely, as we've said all along, a planning, a planning process. So appreciate what's been said before me and endorse that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Manhadas?
Yeah, I'll just I just wanted to second or forth everything that everybody's said. I'm also familiar with the living Cully neighborhood community folks, and I feel like their development efforts include a lot of that area. I'm not intimately familiar with it, but I'm not sure I really understand also the planning department's rationale, other than there's some industrial synergy and that didn't really track for me. So given that we don't have that information, I also would support not making that change.
Thank you. And again, oh, Commissioner Hanson?
I am, I guess, dithering at the start of the prior comments to really explicitly draw back to the criteria with which we are deciding. We've heard the naming of transportation links being one, I think, thinking about the Cully neighborhood as a, as a existing political boundary. And a lot of our conversations have been around respecting those neighborhood existing geographic boundaries. And then also, the Cully neighborhood has been very clear as a community of common interest. And so making the argument that this would inadvertently then divide that community of common interest.
And I will add that when Sophia and I were talking with him, I mentioned to him that the Cully neighborhood boundaries extend beyond Columbia. And he said that it was his understanding that that was because the neighborhood had wanted notification, automatic notification of all of the development decisions that were being made so they could weigh in early. And I asked him if he didn't think that was probably an indicator that they wanted some ability to speak up and control their destiny around that space. And anyway, so I think that's a, I think what everyone said is a reasonable thing to wonder about.
I'm going to push pause on the mapping discussion because we'll also bring up the map with Flow Analytics so we can talk about any other potential changes before we move in. But that was, thank you for briefing us and updates to Commissioner. Next slide, please. So we're going to walk through, we're going to walk through the process, the voting process for ultimately voting on a plan, but a plan that is, that consists of multiple components. So the way, the, last week, we said that we would be
Did we lose sound?
Sorry about that. I'll start over. So I think we, I think we ended up, thank you, Commissioner, for briefing us. We're going to have some time for live mapping and considering other potential revisions. But what we're going to do is walk through the process for actually voting on and approving a final district plan. So that plan will consist of, yes, the map, but it also needs to consist of other components, including a more technical legal description and the actual numbers. We're going to discuss and vote on each, the map and the numbering separately. And we'll do that in today's meeting. And the, and next week's meeting, so between this meeting and next week's meeting, the staff will work with the technical consultants to produce the legal descriptions, and then they will package all of that as a plan. And then that final vote, that next week will constitute the final formal vote. And it's the first, right? So what you'll be doing, sort of walk through today, we would need, so I'll, I'll make a request when we kind of get to this period, this point in the session, that we have a motion and a second to adopt, to vote to adopt the Alder map and direct the staff to prepare a legal description conforming to the map for the IDC's vote on, on the complete districting plan next Monday. In the second half of the meeting, I'll request a motion and a second for a vote to number the districts. That will follow a presentation. Will you have a presentation from City Attorney around what the implications of that are? You'll be able to discuss it and be able to come up with the consensus and then ultimately a vote. And then again, you'll have that entire package. You'll have time to review it and ultimately do that formal vote. Are there any questions on the process? Okay. Sounds good. So at this point, I believe we are ready to, I take down the slides and turn the screen over to Flow Analytics. And Alex, if you can pull up the current version of the map, what I'll do, I'll let you set that up. And what we'll do is request any, we'll review the map again, request any walkthrough, requesting the final revisions that would be requested. If anyone, I'll open that up. If you would like to discuss the earlier revision, any, or the earlier potential revision closer to the airport, we can do that for sure. But this is a time for any potential adjustments that you'd like to have made to the map before we move forward with a vote.
Assume you can all see my screen and the map?
We can all see it. Okay. Thanks, Alex. We'll start with Commissioner Chisholm.
Thank you, Alex. One question I know that both Sharon and I have been thinking about and have mentioned previously. It's one of the stranger things about census blocks, but every freeway seems to have a pair of census blocks for each side of the freeway. And they have no humans in them. Just wanted to make sure that this has been cleaned up a little bit so that wherever a boundary is a freeway, we've got one side of the freeway in one district and the other side of the freeway in the other district. Is that, have you had a chance to do that a little bit of cleanup?
I hear you. That is true, and they are odd. And we didn't want to do the cleanup in advance of the meeting because I just wanted to get this presented to everyone. So thank you for bringing it up. I'll zoom in and show a couple of cases. And then perhaps with any further discussion on it, then we can go ahead and do that if the IDC would like us to. Because I think most of it, this also happens along the river. So let me zoom in. A better place might be Districtor because I'll be able to show the individual blocks and we can kind of show what potential changes would be. So if we zoom in here on I-84 in particular, as we get a little bit closer, there are having it perfectly equal, meaning like when there's one small sinuous block on maybe the north side of 84 and one on the south side, it would be preferred in most cases to have those be in the same. So in this case, I would, I could envision this one being changed to, from the orange district to the teal district to then have a nice flowing line here. And then as we moved over this one that accidentally got marked, you know, north of the highway, that would then change from being teal to this one that accidentally got marked, you know, north of the highway, um that would then change from being teal to the orange district. Um, so we could make those small changes. If there were any that did impact population, um, we would make that known, but I've I've reviewed this, and I think all of them are zero populations. They have no impact on the overall deviation. Um, what I was getting at the beginning is sometimes if you turn on certain boundaries, if I showed the neighborhood organizations, there are cases where census blocks, you know, we've looked at this, they don't align perfectly to the neighborhood boundaries. So in cases that um we want to make sure that the neighborhood is whole, um we have to decide if the census block is in one district or the other. So we'll side with keeping a neighborhood whole. Um I don't think, as I pan around here, that any of, so yeah, like for instance, here Sullivan's Gulch, that one's another good example of where this one should change. Um are is up for debate. If you can see how it is straddling Sullivan's Gulch, Grant Park neighborhood organization boundary. Um, no population, so it could easily go here. Um, we can make those changes, and I think for the most part, that's the biggest issue area along the middle of the Lamont. There's often um census blocks on on both sides, east-west, um and those are nice and fluid right now as things stand. Um, we've also addressed, as I pan over here, the the area where two oh five and I eighty-four um intersect, and and that has been uh conformed for Alder four and April three. So that's the boundary and gateway green in the middle of those two, being the teal district. Um, so I'll leave it there and and ask you all to to either approve me going ahead and making those the small changes to aesthetically uh align the map on the highways.
Uh first, uh, one, one point of clarification. Alex, would you be able to make, do the cleanup in this meeting in real time, or would that be?
Yep.
Okay, great. We do have a couple of other questions too, but we'll we'll uh look at cleaning up as a task. Commissioner Manhada is followed by Commissioner Vansicle, Robin.
Great, thank you. Um, I think that makes a lot of sense where it doesn't conflict with neighborhood boundaries. Um, except for wanting to make sure that um we're looking at the east side waterfront there on the Lamont River, that that stays on the with an east side district, because I do think that's part of the development of that asset for that community. So that's an area where it, you know, I think one side is on, one side is uh I five, and then there's the other side. So just wanted to keep that whole. I think the river makes it a little bit weird. So it's not just looking at the freeway areas, but where the river is more the natural boundary. I think we should stick with the river as a natural boundary.
Thanks.
I think it makes sense for us to go through, just to validate those borders together, just so we can all see those changes. Okay. Um, and then Commissioner Vansicle, Robics.
So Alex, can you go back up, zoom in at the Sullivan's Gulch and the Sullivan's Gulch Grant Parks little area? So that, so it looks like there's just this one area, no, yeah, see the one that um sticks up now in instead of is smooth? Yeah. Does it matter if that one's yellow too?
No, I'd make that change. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I I agree, it'd be that. Yep.
Right. So can you walk us along the different borders, just uh just in each district, and then we can follow along?
Sure. Yeah, I will start, let's see, maybe up along the Lamont River. Um so we start here where the Lamont starts to meet the Columbia. Um you can see how there are census blocks that are on the west side, east side. Walk these, so we don't make any inadvertent changes. Um so as I pan through, let me know, I can always change to area elementary if I switch over to the other mapping application. But you can see how that's a fluid line, kind of right down the center of the Lamont River. Um, as you get into Swan Island, you see how that stays in the orange district. We're still kind of in the center channel of the Lamont. Then we get down to um four oh five bridge, Broadway Bridge, Steel Bridge, still in that central point. I'm gonna continue down and do the whole boundary of the District One in blue. Still going in the center of the channel. Here at the Ross Island Bridge is where we change and we start to expand the blue district across the river. Um, the reason why um in this case, um here is you can see some of the this is the, will end up being uh Springwater corridor. You have Oaks Bottom here, so that being, I think, Commissioner Manhada is just telling what you were getting at, is like that is an area that is associated with um the east side and Sullivan neighborhoods. That's why those census blocks were assigned to the blue.
And uh Alex, can I pause you here? Uh Commissioner, Commissioner Fleishman?
Uh, thanks, Alex. Just a great point. So and and your hand is actually on the place I wanted to ask about. Just uh, thank you, Autumn, for reading my mind. Uh, so this is a, this is a question about uh not about the appropriateness of our decision, but uh whether uh kind of from that notion of having clean lines. Uh, we we do have kind of this uh area that uh that bisects or kind of digs in south, the Brooklyn neighborhood, into into what is the 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 blue district. Uh, are there any issues that you're aware of, kind of technical issues, professional judgment issues that might be raised by somebody looking at this from the outside regarding how we've drawn that that boundary? I don't, I want to be clear, I don't have any issues with it, and I'm not trying to get a change. I'm just trying to make sure that we haven't kind of violated some standard practice in in mapping by 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 kind of presenting that district that has that kind of notch that's taken out of it.
That's good, if I recall, at the request of the Brooklyn neighborhood, that we did that.
Right, right. We are responding to a request.
Yeah.
Somebody else might say, but it's, you know, but but it doesn't follow standard practice and mapping. So I I was just wondering whether um wh- wh- what kind of your professional insight uh is uh regarding kind of our approach to to drawing the lines the way we did there.
Sure. Um, I think you're kind of speaking to maybe kind of the odd shape that kind of extends, right? And yeah, I mean, it's always kind of a red flag if you're an outside observer and you look at, you know, districts and you see some sort of oddity, a peninsula of sorts or things like that. And yeah, you might see that here, but I think if anybody had um the information that was provided by the community, looking at other geographic information, such as the neighborhood boundaries, you can clearly see that Brooklyn extends down, and and in this case, um I have, I actually know, like, from a technical standpoint, any issue with that, it wouldn't affect, you know, things like compactness that much. It makes sense from one of your main criteria of of wanting to use um existing boundaries to draw the districts.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm. There's no other questions? I can continue around if this is helpful. Uh, Autumn, feel free to stop me if any other questions arise.
I think, I think you're all good to continue with the rest of the borders.
Great. So at that point, we kind of go south, catching all of the Brooklyn neighborhood. As you can see, Ben will follow these neighborhood boundaries um so that the the west or blue district is including the Reed, East Morland Reed, East Morlands, um these other neighborhoods to the south. Um, in that blue west district, uh you will note that a change that was made yesterday and reviewed earlier in that table and writing um was looking at the the boundary, um Southeast Harney Drive and cleaning up a census block that was south of Crystal Springs Boulevard. So now there's kind of that nice clean boundary on Crystal Springs. Um, and then using Southeast Forty-Fifth Ave to complete the boundary of the blue district in the south. There's no questions with that. I can kind of follow myself back up to the north. We've reviewed that portion of the teal district, the teal districts as you get to uh, would this be Steel Bridge? You have a boundary to the north with the north northeast district in orange. This is um using census blocks that aren't perfectly aligned with the neighborhood organization, but trying to respect those boundaries, Lloyd District to the north, um currents to the south, using I eighty-four as the boundary. Um, so as we go through here, if we see any need to change any, we will, but looks like, you know, the north side of I eighty-four includes one of the census blocks and then the one to the south. Um, that splits the the highway right away. So we move along I eighty-four following it through Sullivan's Gulch, Hollywood. Um, at that point, when we get to the Hollywood district, we move um boundary becomes northeast Forty-seventh Ave. We move north.
There, is there a piece there on the freeway that needs to be shifted?
Perhaps that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
And that had no population impact?
I will double check. Let's move it. It does, let's see. Go from seven oh four, seven sixteen.
Twelve people.
Yep. That is by the Hollywood Transit Center. Um, there are, I can tell you, there's no homes. Um, but the census is capturing everybody. Uh, they have a census, so that's uh where those people were captured in that census block right here. So I do believe that makes sense, though, for alignment of north-south.
I'll I'll pause you here, Alex. Um, we'll just do a consensus vote. Is there any opposition to making that change, shifting the population well, population from the teal, the more southern Southeast District into the northern district? Uh, so I have opposition?
No.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Oh, sorry. No, a comment from Commissioner Manhadas.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a comment that um I think this is a good idea in that it is aligning more with the boundary for Hollywood, because I know there's um affordable housing in that area that the Hollywood neighborhood is really focused on, and I don't know how far south it goes. So I think doing, trying to encompass all of that in the Hollywood neighborhood boundary is, um I think might be helpful for those efforts of just being that, I'm texting the people. No opposition, no.
Are there any other comments?
Again, it's about this little slice of, I don't know, what it may be, some tents along the freeway there. You know, transportation link wise, they would need to be with the neighborhoods, with the census blocks north of them, where they can walk rather than running across the freeway in the south. So, yeah.
Hopefully going around the freeway, but.
But that's, well, again, that would not keep the transportation, right?
Oh, not doing that. Uh. Lumley?
Yeah, Autumn, I have a quick question. I know when we were going through the Sullivan's Gulch map before, Alex, you were making some shifts in where the orange and teal were. Um, could you con, I I guess I would like to make sure, Autumn, that you are getting consensus on whether if he made those changes and they still are changed, I would like to make sure those are, everybody's clear on that as well, please.
Uh, sure. I think
Talking about the small little changes along the freeway?
It didn't, uh, actually, yes, clarification. Are you talking about along the freeway?
Yes, yes. Along the freeway, I know Alex was like, yeah, that one makes sense, but I didn't hear anybody say consensus. Yes, everybody's fine with it, and I prefer that, please.
We're back to
So one of them that changed was right here, and I would double check. Um population did not change with that.
And so would there be opposition to, so actually, Alex, if you can just pause right there. Uh, would there be any opposition to moving the census block or aligning more with the census block to align more with the highway? No population impact, but that did shift that census block from the southeast district into the northernmost district. Okay, seeing no, seeing no opposition, that change will pass. Alex, you can move to the next.
Yeah. So as we move north on northeast Forty-seventh Ave, we get to this census block that might raise some eyebrows here. You can see how it's clearly bisected um by the neighborhood organization boundary. So it needs to go in one district rather than in this iteration of Alder, as well as many other maps, it was put with the the teal district, southeast district. Um so then we move north, continuing on forty-seven until we get to Fremont Street, where we then had the east using Fremont as the boundary. Um, until we get to Sixty-third Ave, and this was also discussed and outlined in the Excel table of um of changes that we saw earlier. Um these are also um census blocks that some of them are elongated east-west, that's the ones I'm highlighting here, that straddle that neighborhood boundary um from Rose Way and Cully. Um, so these were always part of that north northeast district. The change that was made last week was to put these two census blocks into that district so that we had a nice clean north-south boundary on Sixty-third Ave. Boundary then heads farther to the east along Prescott till it gets to Eighty-second Ave. Turns south just slightly or for a little uh few blocks until it gets northeast Sandy Boulevard at Skidmore. This is following neighborhood boundaries, um Sumner to the north, Maywood Park, uh Madison South, excuse me, to the south. Um, we are then moving into uh, this is Rocky Bees, and we have Maywood Park, which is not part, it's its own incorporated uh city, I believe, instead of being part of Portland. So that's why we don't have any district within Maywood Park. So the teal district is including all census blocks that are within the city of Portland's part of Rocky Bees. Um, this is I two oh five, I eighty-four to uh just a little bit to the east. Talked about how Gateway Green, um that part in between the highways, um that is part of teal district.
Question.
Can I pause you there? Uh, Commissioner Lumley?
Thank you. Can you scroll the screen back up so we can see Maywood Park?
Yeah.
Just wanted an explanation of why there's that teal section that separates teal, uh Maywood Park there?
Mm-hmm, that you can see when I highlight it, it's a long census block. Um, and it's based on the census, it's like part of Portland. Um, but it's really just highway right away. Um, this is I two oh five.
Great, thank you.
Then we head south. We are
I think there's a s- a piece of freeway again that needs to be moved there.
Sure. Are you thinking potentially this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now I changed a couple of different colors. Let's do it. Back here. So that did not change any population when I was moving along. I that's eight four there.
So we'll pause there, we'll pause there. Uh, is there any opposition to making that change, which takes lines more with eighty-four? Does not change the population, but does shift uh the census block from Southeast District into the Easternmost District? Okay, seen none. That change is accepted. Now, Alex, you can continue.
As we move, these are really small, pretty insignificant. You can see how you could think that maybe these would be moved into the green, but then you get to this next one, uh these all don't have population. Um, it would just look kind of an odd uh boundary here, so I think it makes sense to leave those in this interchange area as they are. Um, and then you turn south Um and then you turn south to. Follow. Two oh five. Excuse me, now just a little bit to see um. You can see how those. Definitely should be the teal district as they are, even though I have a little bit hanging over. Um move south. We are now moving south on two oh five. Till we get to Division. Where that boundary then heads west along Division.
And Alex, I'm realizing, I don't think you clarified, but I believe at. Some point earlier in the mapping, you turned on the darker borders, which are the neighborhood boundaries.
I think that's true. Yeah, what we're looking at in dark green. Yeah. Yep. And I can turn those off if that's help. Helpful, or I'll leave them on for right now. Uh but yeah, dark green.
It's it's helpful. I just wanted to clarify why, what people were seeing for the darker.
Thank you. Um so here at Division, uh we turn south on eighty second app, we follow eighty seconds. All the way down, I'm not seeing any issues. The blocks are are pretty well, use eighty second also as the dividing line until we get to the south end of the city. On Class Up Street. There's no questions with that. I can. Continue. I think, you know, we've looked at this whole boundary between the teal and the green district. All the way up through Maywood Park. As well as um near Sumner Association, we left off here. So if we continue north for the green district, we follow eighty second. Including where it just jogs over slightly. Till we get to the Columbia Slough. This is the area we were talking about earlier, where then we're using census blocks along the slough. Um I could see. Where. This one potentially. Would be part of the green. I'll leave that for the commission. I can check if there's any population. Um but that would follow. You can see the neighborhood boundary, this one, that one right here that I'm doing.
Uh could be, could you, could you test the population just so folks are aware?
Yep. So. No population change. No population change. So that just makes a smoother boundary along the Columbia Slough.
Would you like to make that? Would there be any opposition to making that change so that the border does follow the neighborhood boundary? And that would. Um or any comments to that effect?
Commissioner Manadas? Um just a clarifying question. So is that just uh? A road and a waterway? Just so I understand what I'm looking at.
This is just, uh let's see, at this point, it's corn foot. And I can switch over if we want to work that.
Yeah, geographic.
Yeah, I can look at aerial imagery for a second here, too. So we're talking about following corn foot um. Right here, and that slough is right there to the south.
Um I would. Prefer personally to follow the road and allow that to come over, but to keep the slough uh northeast district next connected to the residents who are in that area. Um. I know there's like. Issue, water issues that are bubbling in that area, and I think it's going to be really important for people to have connection to that. Um in terms of representation.
So we have some uh explicit preference for keeping the original. Boundary where it was. Are there any other comments? Any requests for changes?
I'm sorry, I couldn't get to my hand raised, but I just want to support Commissioner Menores's comments to keep the slough in one district, the 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 ten.
Is there any opposition to just keeping it the same way it was? No change? Okay, uh seeing none. Alex, we're going to revert back to the original.
Yep, that's gonna use corn foot road as the boundary and it's changed back.
Sorry, I did actually. There is one, there's one comment. Commissioner Judd?
Let's make sure that we are. Uh the rationale for it.
Uh Commissioner Manadas, do you mind repeating? I think.
Just make sure that we're capturing the rationale.
Just in the, for the minutes. Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh okay, Alex. You're good to continue.
Yeah, at this point, I'm just gonna look over to the aerial imagery because you can see a little better corn foot then. Turns into forty seven on this corner. Um so the boundary then follows the Columbia Slough. Things, uh sorry, west, excuse me. So. We are now using the the waterway boundary. And we follow that until we get to thirty third.
Uh is there an option to change that or no?
Sorry?
Uh. Yeah, thanks. Uh Commissioner Chisholm, was there, uh what was your question?
The question is, are there census blocks such that we could? Make it something not the waterway? As Commissioner Manhara was just suggesting, keep the waterway all in one district.
Um it actually is here. Now I switch back here and you can kind of see um.
It is that way.
Yeah, you can see how both the census blocks there is kind of split here. They're part of the. The tan or orange district. Um and it makes sense to do so because you can see how sinuous and strange this one is, the one I'm highlighting right now, where it continues to the south. Um so yes, I think we are in a good spot with with the boundary here. Any question? More questions?
Alex, you're you're good to continue.
Thanks. So then we get to thirty third and turn north. There are a couple census blocks here. That are part of the. Catkin Marsh Natural Area. You can see how it extends just slightly over thirty third, so that obviously should stay in the green with the rest of the the PDX property. Um. And. Then. Continue moving north along thirty third census blocks follow that pretty well. When you get up near the the river, um the census blocks actually kind of just. You know, this is water. We are continuing straight north of thirty third. Um so this makes sense how these census blocks are divided between the two districts here. See one question, Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. Um can you scroll back down to the marsh?
Uh huh.
So I'm seeing the neighborhood boundary that. Can you, could you just hover over the census block again? Because I'm seeing the neighborhood boundary as though. Oh, I see. Okay.
Then, yeah, this is.
I'm seeing the right-hand border because I was thinking like, does it make sense? More sense for that marsh to be in the yellow with the Sunderland, but I see how it like goes off to the. It like extends a bit more to the right, but I don't know what other folks think about. Think about that. I have no preference and yeah, well, but.
There, are there any other thoughts or questions on this one?
What's? Is there any population in that area or is that all marsh?
No population either of those census blocks that I just changed.
Uh Commissioner Hanson makes a good point. It does appear to make the. Neighborhood, the Sumner uh more whole looking.
May- maybe we could switch over to the geographic map to see if, like what. Uh.
We're talking about this area right here. So, yep. So industrial. Along thirty third with the natural area behind it.
Um I'm curious if we heard from any of the folks in that neighborhood. And folks who are in North Portland about wanting to keep that. Area together. I'm also.
The marsh, you're asking about the marsh specifically.
Yeah.
Well, the. The census block includes marsh and. The um industrial area. I think the, what Commissioner Hanson might have been bringing up is. If our, one of our goals is to keep neighborhood associations uh boundaries. Whole, and this doesn't affect the population, why, why would we move this section into the the? The north, I guess that would be the airport area.
I mean, on the side of this is how, sorry, I was gonna say on the flip side of this is how it was and no one commented about it. Maybe we shouldn't change it. So I. That Commissioner.
Commissioner Fleishman?
Yeah, the the other thing to consider is is, again, going back to the. Point I made earlier about drawing clean lines, thirty third. Remains a a clean line. There's no, there's no population there. So. Uh again, this is miniscule. I don't have a, I don't have a position. I'm just. Uh pointing out the consistency of us trying to draw clean, clean lines unless there's some compelling reason. Why we, we don't. And thirty third is the clean line.
Commissioner Vanceickel Robbins?
And I just wanted to add that um since we're not talking about population and since this is the way it's been drawn. For quite a while and the Planning Bureau had, did have. Didn't make a change here because it satisfied what they were concerned about. I don't, I don't, I guess I don't know why we would change it now. Um.
I think Commissioners, Commissioner Judd?
Yeah, I guess. Because it is, it is part of the neighborhood association. Apparently. Um. What level of management, if any? Influence this neighborhood association have? Over the area, just because it's not popular. Well, I. I'm, I'm with uh. The argument against the clean lines is if it keeps the neighborhood association whole, right, or there's a hope. And in this particular case, it does. There's a, that drip over thirty third that's there now. Goes away. When you pull it over. There's no population there. So if we had the error on the side of. Clean line or. Uh keep the neighborhood association whole. It seems to me that the the latter would be preferred.
Uh thank you. Commissioner Kamora?
Um my one question on this is. How do you access this marsh? Is this through the airport? Is it from Sunderland? Um. I'm not clear how to get there. And. As Commissioner Judd pointed out. Is this some area that Sunderland neighborhood? Wants to.
Bank is.
Yeah, okay.
If it's Whittaker Pond, you get there from northeast forty second, but I can't, I was just zooming in to see if it's the thing that I'm thinking of. Um. I don't see the pond, but if if that's what it is, it's it's.
Whittaker is actually out by fifty third avenue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Can I see it?
I freeze my hand again.
Yeah, okay.
So here's, here's the other thing. We uh we align. With Commissioner Mahadas is pouring around the sloop. Uh if that feeds into the sloop and there's water issues associated with it. And we acknowledge that. Slough should be part of the same district. But again, why would we not? Include it in that same district? I'm.
May add more context to.
Uh Commissioner Manadas?
Yeah, I I mean, I think that part of it is recognizing especially a culture with Portland neighborhoods that. A lot of folks who have connection to these natural areas, even though it doesn't have population, spend a lot of time engaging with those areas. I'm not particularly familiar with this one. Um but if we're looking at some of those industrial buildings, like one of them is like the Oregon Food Bank, you know what I mean? So that's where people are volunteer. There's like a lot of people. Engagement in that area. So I think it's. Something to consider um and just. I mean, I'm of two minds. I feel like if. A map out there and folks didn't tune in on it, then I do think that, you know, we should give weight to that, but also if it is, if some folks did assume that it was. Like their neighborhood is going to be whole, which I know is true of many folks in these neighborhoods where they just kind of assume like, oh, well, they'll draw around my neighborhood. Boundary and didn't feel the need to comment, then I think there's something that, so some people may just not be aware that it's being split like that. And I lean towards keeping people connected to sort of the places that are adjacent to them.
Commissioner Fleishman?
Yeah, I I find the arguments around respecting uh neighborhood boundaries persuasive, particularly. Again, i- if we have to violate a clean line in order to do that. I'm fine with it. That's, that was the question with. With Brooklyn. Uh so uh so my final question, I think the answer is. Uh would somebody in the other district feel a loss? If, if this particular. Area who. Went, went to the other district, my, my guess in the absence of having that knowledge is no. Uh so I, I think I'm persuaded by what Commissioner Mon Harris and Judd said that we should. Uh incorporate this into, to move the district.
And move that we move those two census blocks into the northeast district.
Um first, Alex, could you put the census block version of the map back up? Okay, and just so we're clear, um Commissioner Chisholm has made a motion. And so.
Second.
The motion would be to shift the two uh the two census blocks that are being highlighted right now from. In northern. Uh so sorry, from the eastern district into the northern district, and there's a second from Commissioner Manadas. Is there any opposition to that change? Seeing none that. Oh. Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Fleishman, that hand is not opposition, is it?
It is not opposition. It is slow reflexes.
Okay. Only slow reflexes and no opposition uh that. And we do have. A few more portions of the border to that uh just to validate. Is that right, Alex? If I'm tracking correctly?
Uh yes, we have a. Let's see, do we have any more? I, we've pretty much covered everything, yeah.
Oh, you made it all the way north. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, maybe we zoom back out. And then see if there are any other. Any other questions, any other portions of the map that you'd like to review? Uh I see two hands, one from Commissioner, first from Commissioner Hanson, and then we'll go to Commissioner Valdini.
I was, I was just gonna ask if we could rerun the population deviation numbers. I don't believe there was any change, but just so we're like. Triple, quadruple checking that, that would be great.
Alex, I, you can do the math. We'll have Commissioner Valdini uh ask the ball.
I just wanted to um.
Zero two percent less deviation. That's a good.
I want to triple check on the freeway because of the boy earnings names. As Lily pointed out, I think we might have made some other changes quickly on the way and just in, in, you know, making sure that we are. Really consistent. Uh if we could go back. To the freeway and just make sure we've uh accepted, officially accepted all of the changes that were made as we.
Okay, so Alex will verify the adjusted, the new deviation, and then we will go back, and I believe. All of the changes were along, were only along the um. Two districts, the northern district and the southeast district on that uh westernmost side of eighty four. So we'll just go back and make sure we covered everything. And just do a formal, just check for each again.
Yeah, give me one second here. I think Commissioner. Um. One of the commissioners had the number, but I'm also gonna just double check that we have. Uh little to no change. I just want to remind ourselves here. Actually, I'm not sure if you can see it, but um we were at five point zero percent exactly. Um so now. With those very small changes, let's see. Still at five point zero percent.
Uh thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Mm hmm.
Uh can you just walk us through the eighty, the border uh along eighty four?
Sure.
We'll go, we'll go. If it. If it works. I think we could also go maybe block by block. With the current iteration as it shows up on the map, just to validate. That the borders would be what, should be kind of where it is currently in real time. Does that work, folks?
Then take a motion to accept it all.
And then accept it all. Yeah.
Okay, so starting here along this. Along the steel bridge and moving along eighty-four?
Perfect.
Okay. So I'll hover over some of these so we can kind of see, um. How they're oddly shaped. So these ones, as we start, definitely should be in the teal district. Um, same with these as we scroll through. So then we get into where there's kind of two on, on the north side and the south side. You can see how that one should be teal. This one should then be. In a tan or orange color. Shift a little farther. Um. Trying to also, you see those dark green lines? So there's still the neighborhood boundaries. So we are keeping one on the south side, one on the north side there. Same with right here, here. That one obviously extends farther north. So that one, part of the tan district. Scroll over farther as we make our way into Saltwood Gulch. One on the north, one on the south side. This one extends farther north. That makes sense. Small one on the south side. Got one on the north, one on the south. One on the north, one on the south. So on. And then here we have one large block through Providence, the office park. Um, and then this was the one that we changed that is on the north side. And then there's one on the south side. Any questions with those?
There, I'm seeing no questions. But. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt?
Motion to adopt them exactly as you showed them to us.
I'll second that. In real time, just to be clear. Motion is to. Accept these changes to the border along eighty-four as have been showed to us in real time with a sec. That was from Commissioner Chisholm with a second from Commissioners Exe. Uh, is there any opposition to that motion? Saying none, those will be accepted. There were also. So I believe we did, I believe we did look at the Hollywood order that is more on the eastern side, but I just wanted to be sure. That that is, uh, I think there was an adjustment that was made that did not impact population. Is that correct, Alex?
I don't recall. We, we made this change right here that definitely did impact population. That was in Hollywood.
It was just how, okay, that's, that's the, that's the border line. That was the only change to Hollywood. Okay. Great. Are there any other requests? To either review? Any aspect of the map that we either discussed tonight or haven't discussed yet? It was your pleasure. It was your pleasure.
First, let me put my hand down. Uh. Would you, Alex, would you mind just so we can all see it in real time, uh, running the check for unassigned? Oh, yeah. Very good idea. It's peck marked. We have none that are outlined in red. I can very quickly, um, you give, you know, within a five-minute period when we take a break, I can run the summary statistics and that. Does some background checks to make sure that there's continuity, you know, as we work with some of these really small blocks. If one erroneously got. Tagged to this, uh, uh, the wrong district, I'll, I'll flag that and I can run that when I have five minutes of time.
Uh, in the agenda, we have a break that is supposed, the ten-minute break that is supposed to come after. The vote to adopt the district map. However, we could take that break now. Alex, that means you don't get a break, but.
I don't need a break. Yep.
Okay, you could have that ready before we come back. We've got a machine. We'll come back. Uh, we'll reconvene at seven twenty-five. And. Then if we're ready, we can move to a vote once that data comes back.
One sixty-seven oh four to one sixty-seven sixteen. That's that one census block with twelve. And then that, um, same change was made in the other direction for District Three. So six fifty-four, six forty-two. And, uh, yeah, so spatially, we're in good shape with continuity. Um, double check that. And we need to look at the map at all. Any more time I have, um, a version that you can see the changes, but we, we went through them. So I'll leave that to you.
Okay. Commissioner Chisholm?
And Alex, would you just make sure to save that map on Districter so that the public can see it there?
Yep, I actually did already. So you, it should be the latest one. It should be called. Uh, PDX IDC Draft Map Alder Four with today's date, twenty twenty-three zero eight sixteen meeting.
Yep, that's it.
Right.
And so at this point. Unless there are any other proposed revisions, I'll pause here. Okay, so seeing none. I haven't, can I have, is there a motion on the floor to adopt the Alder map and direct the staff to prepare a legal description? Informing to the map's IDC vote on the complete districting plan. On Monday, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins has made the motion and Commissioner Wise has seconded. Commissioner Siegel, did you have a question or were you trying to sneak in?
Oh, I just was politely raising my hand. But that's okay.
Record also that Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins, Commissioner Wise seconded. Uh, is there any opposition? I'll, I'll read the motion again. Uh, the motion on the floor is to adopt the Alder map and direct the staff. To prepare a legal description conforming to the map where I, for the independent district commission's vote. On the complete districting plan on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Is there any opposition to the motion?
We need to say the Alder Four map.
One we've been just working on.
Current to, to clarify, there was a question around clarifying which map we're discussing. We are discussing. The current iteration of Alder. Version four that was amended. In real time today.
That's recent version.
This recent version.
Just to say the Districter map number one nine two nine eight three.
So. I will restate the motion for clarity. Uh, the motion is restated as. And Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins, you can tell me if this is accepted. Uh, to adopt the Alder map version one, Alder map version four. Which is currently meant, uh, currently on Districter as number one nine eight two.
Nine two, nine eight three.
It's currently version one nine two one eight three.
One nine two. Nine eight three.
And dog we trust.
Once I'm sorry, we've got, who's this?
I'm gonna.
We're gonna adopt a crazy map.
Hands one.
I'm gonna reach out the motion for clarity. So the motion on the floor is to adopt the Alder map, which is currently on Districter, amended live today, which is version. Alder version one. Nine two.
It's in the chat, in the chat.
Thank you. One, this is current version one nine two nine eight three. And direct district staff to prepare a legal description conforming to the map for the independent district commission's vote. On the complete districting plan. On Monday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
So moved and it was still seconded by Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Monday is August twenty-first.
And.
Yeah, you had said August twenty-second, it's August twenty-first. As, as a friendly amendment.
Time is a charm.
More starbursts.
We'll restate the motion for clarity.
We'll try this at home.
She breaks down in the ninetieth yard. Motion on the floor is to adopt the Alder map, which is version. Which was amended live today, version one nine two eight nine three.
One nine two nine eight three.
Three four. Adopt the Alder version, the Alder. Map of the version. amended today, version one nine two nine eight three. And direct the staff to prepare a legal description conforming to the map for the independent district commission's vote. On the complete districting plan on Monday, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. And I, and Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins says so.
Second again.
And seconded by Commissioner Wise for the record. Is there any opposition to that motion? As most recently presented? Seeing none. That motion passes. I took us off schedule. Get us back on. That's on me.
Watson Katie, she's stealing you so hard over there.
Okay. Okay. So. We actually. I'm, I'm. Did I say this before? We'll need to take a roll call vote.
Can Lily confirm that?
Lily, is that, is that required?
So, um, when we vote on the final district plan, you need to take a roll call vote because we need to confirm the nine. Votes for that because we're considering this to be an early, you know, essentially like. A tentative early component of that final vote. I'm comfortable with the vote. If any of you are uncomfortable, do the roll call, roll call because it doesn't take that long, but I'm comfortable if we wait till Monday.
Is there any opposition to waiting until Monday to take a, a roll call vote on the entire district plan? Uh, Commissioner Fleishman?
Uh, no opposition. I just have a question. Prior to that, given what Lindley just said. Uh, this does not count as a vote. If this does not count as a vote, I just want to be clear in the unforeseen circumstance. That we wind up taking. Two votes for whatever reason. We haven't exhausted one of those votes. As stated in. Kind of our, our game rules so far. Just want to make sure we're preserving every option, even though we have an expectation that's going to take one vote. Is that? I get a confirmation of that from the city attorney?
Yes, that, that is correct. You have two shots at the districting plan. The districting plan has multiple components. You are just forwarding a component so that we can prepare the legal description and have your first vote on Monday.
Thank you, Lindley. So at this point. Congratulations on part one, but there's still more work to do. So. Uh, so at this point, we're ready to move to the phase of the agenda. Well, first, are there, let me actually pause here. And are there any reflections at this point, having voted on this portion of adopting the map to move forward for the district plan? Are there any? Reflections from the Commissioners? You'll have plenty of opportunity later. And I realize all your reflections are going to be. After eleven meetings, can she read a motion? Okay, so we're going to move to the portion where we will review, uh, numbering the districts. We will have, uh, Lindley. Provide an overview on the implications there. We will then review the data itself and numbering. So at this point, uh, Lindley?
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm Lindley Reese. I'm a deputy city attorney for the city of Portland. Um, I'm one of the team that. Covers the council transition and I know Maya has been here before. Um, I am filling in for Maya while she's in Hawaii and so I really. Having not seen you before, I really appreciate the process you've been through and watching you tonight, um, how seriously you're taking the process. And Autumn, I've been in the position of trying to articulate motions before and I, I appreciate you as well. So. Um, the good news is my presentation is super short, so I will get through it in a couple minutes. Um, and then if there are questions, I can answer them. So the char, the new charter in section three dash one oh one states that there will be a mayor. And a District One and a District Two set of commissioners, so three for each district, who will be elected for four years in November two thousand twenty-four. There will be an auditor and a district, this group of District Three and a group of District Four commissioners who are, uh, appointed for two years. In November twenty twenty-four. The further the charter says that the independent district commission, commission adopts a districting plan that includes a map. And a description of the districts, which would include numbering those districts. So there's nothing in the charter, nothing that says how you have to number the districts. The Charter Commission explicitly did not address that issue, but identified. A recommendation that the two districts with the historically lowest voter turnout. The, that would be districts one and two, so that they would have their elections at the same time as the mayor. And therefore had potentially have higher turnout. The other two districts, districts three and four, would have elections in the same year as the auditor. That is a recommendation in the final report of the Charter Commission. It is not binding on this group. So this group can. What, you know, think through the factors that are important to you. You can follow the Charter recommendation, Charter Commission recommendation. Or you could identify, um, other factors in terms of how you want to number those districts. That's pretty much what your parameters are. Um, Sophia, is anything else you wanted me to add?
No, I don't think so. It's just overview.
Okay, um, but Lindley, you are, you said you are available to take any questions.
Yep.
So we'll open the floor up to any questions from the Commissioners. Or thoughts, and I think if there's a request for just. Guidance around any thoughts or. Potential considerations, we can wait as well. And we'll start with Commissioner Kamora and we'll have, uh, Commissioner Fleishman follow. Commissioner Kamora?
Uh, good evening, everybody, and, and thank you very much to Commissioner Siegel, who attended the Monday night meeting with me. One of the questions they came up with about the two-year, four-year. Is that, I want to be. Clear that I'm telling the right information. Everybody votes in twenty twenty-four. But the group that go, goes with the city auditor. Gets, has to run again in two years. And the vote, the group that goes with the mayor has, has two more, four years actually before they have to run again. Is that correct, Lindley?
That's correct, Eileen.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Fleishman, you still, uh, and then after Commissioner Fleishman, Commissioner Wise.
Lindley, thank, thank you for the background. In, information. I assume everybody gets to vote for the auditor. Not just two districts, so.
Yeah, everybody votes for the mayor and the auditor. Yes.
Yeah, just want to be clear on that. Okay. So my, my, uh, my question is just so that we're very clear, uh, about the, the Charter. Commission. Uh, this was a recommendation from the Charter Commission voted on by, as part of their recommendations. Uh, as opposed to a recommendation made to the Charter Commission perhaps by individuals. Which, which one of those two was it?
So the, the Charter Commission produced a report at the end. They, the things that they voted on, and I, I might ask, um, the transition staff to jump in as well. The language we're talking about is in their report. Then, and I'm happy to read that, but it's, it's on page thirteen of the Charter Commission's final report to city council. So it wasn't a, um, the Charter Commission is charged with obviously identifying charter changes that they make. It was not. Part of a charter change and they specifically decided not to make it. And they specifically decided not to make it part of a charter change, but instead to identify this as a recommendation so that as the districts were formed, people had that information.
Right. So I just, I'm just going to extend this because I want, I want to make sure that we're clear about it and then the public is clear about it when, when we come to our decision. We, it's our intention, I think, as a commission also, to issue a set of recommendations for future commissions that, that handle this, so it handled a similar task. So I assume it's at that level, right? A set of recommendations, but it will be a statement of this commission, not of an individual or something we heard.
That, that is, that is correct. It is a non-binding statement of the commission.
Got it. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Wise, would you?
Yeah. Yeah, seeing as it is advisory, I would also just like to place my support for the logic behind the recommendation. You know, I, I think that part of the rationale in my mind is that, that, you know, I know the report talks about the mayoral race, but it's also the presidential. Not to knock the mayoral race, but I, 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 I think there's a lot of excitement that comes with the presidential track as well. And so, you know, I think that's a unique opportunity that we have to bolster voter engagement. It could be used as a tool to uplift the districts that, you know, or areas in Portland that have not been engaged at the level that probably have needed to be engaged.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, sorry, just second what Commissioner Wise just said. And then I have a, have a clarification and then also a question related to what Commissioner Kamora had said a couple of minutes ago. So it's my understanding that, you know, everybody runs in twenty twenty four, and then in twenty twenty six, we've got the folks from districts three and four. And at that point, everyone's on like an alternating four-year cycle every two years. And so like three and four will be in twenty twenty six, twenty thirty, twenty thirty four. My question for Linley is, do you know what happens after redistricting in twenty thirty? So like the redistricting will happen in twenty thirty in advance of the twenty thirty two election, but we're going to have folks from some districts who aren't up for reelection until twenty thirty four. So do they just then kind of for the rest of their term be in whatever the reconfiguration of district three and four is until they're up for reelection? Are those, are they grandfathered in? I'm, I'm just curious what that looks like. I'm, I'm most familiar with, I'm sure Chisholm probably knows, but I'm, I'm most familiar with congressional redistricting that happens, you know, every two years. And so people are elected every time the districts are newly drawn. But I'm curious what that, what that looks like.
You know, Commissioner Hanson, I apologize as I'm stepping in for somebody that is not something I have thought about. I, we, I will take that question back and we can certainly get you an answer. And, and if, yeah, if Commissioner Chisholm knows, please step in.
I, I don't know what it specifically says in the charter reform. I do know that the state senate here in North Florida, similar logic applies, right? You have folks who are elected in the decennial year, and then we, we draw the boundaries the next year, and they serve the entire four years. You are required as a state legislator to live in your district, except if you're one of those state senators in that short window. You've been elected, your district may have shifted, and you might have fallen out of your district. You can't run for reelection unless you move, but that's the logic that happens at the state senate, well.
Oh, so may I, may I jump in, Commissioner Hanson? Because I actually happened to print out the right section, and I just hadn't read, read far enough today. No change in the boundary of a district. Oh, that's by annexation. I take it back. I don't know. I will, I will have to look. It's really clear when we, there's annexation or withdrawal of territory. It will not terminate the office of a counselor, but I will look and we'll, we'll talk about it.
I, I imagine it will probably be if there, if there is precedent at the state level, I imagine will be similar. And the other thing that I'm thinking about is like, since everyone's on a four-year sequence, it will just be like every decade, a different set of two districts will have that like longer service in the newly drawn districts.
The state senate has.
Yeah, so over time it will come up in the watch.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments, concerns around either the approach to numbering? Just some thoughts that you want to discuss? Commissioner, Commissioner Chisholm and then Commissioner Manhadas.
Just to key off of what Commissioner Wise is saying, you know, the math, you know, if we're trying to maximize the number of people voting in city council elections, you would argue that we put the two districts with the lowest voter turnout in the highest turnout election, presidential years, and then the other two districts in the lower turnout years, the midterms or gubernatorial elections, as we know them in Oregon. I would concur with that, that logic, and to maximize the number of actual votes will actually happen.
Commissioner Manhadas?
Yeah, I'm going to assert or force that sentiment and say that I think a big part of this moment also, just to, to layer onto that, is that a lot of folks in Portland aren't going to be familiar with this process. And so it really, the success of this whole reform effort, I think, is really going to hinge on engagement, particularly in this early election. So I think setting us on the right path where we do have, you know, we're setting it up for success and, and trying to maximize participation for all the reasons that were just mentioned, I think that's going to be really important. So I think the logic is really sound, but also I think it's just really important in terms of like building buy-in and some, you know, participation into this process. Thank you.
So I believe we, in the last session, I believe we walked through, we looked at generally speaking, the districts that had the lowest and the highest turnout while we were looking at maps. Alex, would you be able to actually visually show us which, which of the districts in Alder version one nine two nine eight three have the lowest and the highest turnout?
Yeah, I can show you a map visually of turnout by precincts, and we can look at that first. And then before the meeting, I ran stats on voter turnout for the version of the map that we came into the meeting of. So remembering that just twelve, population of twelve has changed, so it really will change this to six. We can use those. So let me get that map loaded. Share my screen and get the statistics up as well. Okay, you all should see my screen. Let me change some of our layers here. We looked at this last week. There's two layers for voter history and turnout based on the twenty twenty election and the twenty twenty two election. So just getting a sense, I know that the, the districts aren't on here right now, but we can see voter turnout by precincts. I'll turn the legend on so you can see higher turnout in those darker purple colors as you transition into lighter purple and the blue, and very light blue, you're getting less and less turnout. Although the, because there's more turnout typically during a presidential election, the scale is different, but you'll see a similar pattern as that change around twenty twenty to twenty twenty two. So symbol, symbolism, the bins of turnout have changed, but you can still see a similar pattern geographically. So maybe more importantly, though, I switch over to the statistics. So taking that precinct level data and assigning precincts to the districts is a relatively easy geographic analysis, although just for clarity, there are, you know, precincts that are large that span or are divided between multiple districts. So we did a little bit of extra work to be able to better allocate those voters to the districts that they're actually within, rather than just assigning a precinct to one of the districts. So that's been applied. You can see how we have both the election turnouts, twenty twenty on the left, twenty twenty two on the right. So this is by district, and we're looking at that turnout. In both cases, District two and District four have the lowest turnout.
For, for clarity, I know that the districts are numbered based on districter, but could you refer to them as by geography?
Yep, yep. So let's just for best clarity, let's, let's put it up here so you can see them. So blue district and districters, District one and districter. The orange district is two. Teal is number three. Green is number four. So again, lowest turnout, both of these elections were districts two in orange, north, northeast district, and District four were the green east district.
Can I make an upbringing proposal?
Yes.
I, I'm, this is probably what we're all thinking of. District one could be east, District two could be north, District three could be southeast, and District four could be west. As it sounds.
Okay, the second was, okay, so the motion was from Commissioner Sexena, and the second is from Commissioner Lorente. Okay, so I'm going to restate the motion, just so we have it for the record. So the record is to have the districts numbered as, sorry, the motion is to have the districts numbered as follows, reflected on Alder map version one nine two nine eight three. The easternmost district would be labeled number one. That is currently shown in green, lime green, to be specific. The northernmost district would be labeled as number two, and that is in yellow, tanish. The, the westernmost district would be labeled as number three.
The southernmost.
Oh, sorry, the southernmost district would be labeled as number three. And that's teal, and that's the southeast district. And the most western district, blue, would be labeled as number four. So that motion is on the floor and it has been seconded. Is there any opposition to it as stated? Okay, seeing none. We also have numbers. And a question from Commissioner Manhadas.
Do we need to also say, because I know it was advisory, that one and two, well, we're going to follow basically what was proposed in the federal commission report. Where one and two would be for four years.
Okay.
And three and four would be for two.
It's already in the charter.
I believe that is already in the charter, but I just want Linley to confirm. The numbers already correspond to what is in statute, correct?
In the charter, yes.
Okay.
And so everyone, and just, this was stated before, but all four districts will vote in this upcoming election in twenty twenty four. But districts one and two will be, will be elected in the same year as the mayor, and districts three and four will be elected in the same year as the auditor. And so districts three and four will be voting again after two years, whereas one and two will be voting again after four. Okay. You're moving very long. So, yeah. Would you mind bringing back up the slide deck? So we're going to move into the votes for today. We're finished with the votes. We're going to move into a process where we're going to ask you to share some reflections and some thoughts as the staff will start to work on, one, they will be compiling the plan from a legal perspective, but also developing a report that will be produced to encapsulate the commission's work. Wait for the slides before we walk through the process. So so the commission will be producing a report, so that we'll be able to both kind of document the process of what the commission is, how it was formed, the work you did over the past six months. And, but specifically, the staff and flow analytics, the technical consultants, will be drafting the report to document that work, and they'll be doing that in the coming weeks. So after your work is concluded. But that really means that we need to start getting some of your reflections, especially as they relate to the criteria, your rationale on the record now, so that we have that information to work from. Tonight, we'll walk through the planned outline at a high level, and we'll ask you if you, to share any thoughts on areas that you believe may be missing, or you can answer or dress and work through any questions that you may have. The staff will work to accommodate any requests for additional information or specifics to be included to the best of their ability. And we'll wrap the discussion with some reflections on your, from a personal perspective as well. So you'll have the opportunity to, yes, speak as a commission, but also to be able to share any feedback that you have as individual commissioners. Those can be included as guidance for future, future decision makers, as well as future commissioners. Commissioners are decision makers as well, right? But this will be available for the community as well. We will also continue next week. Of course, we'll have to vote on the final district plan, but we'll also have time in the agenda to have any final reflections as well as a body. And in the next day or so, you'll be receiving an anonymous survey to help capture your thoughts. And if you don't want to share them openly, and they are, but those really will be your, again, personal reflections at that point. This report specifically will detail the IDC's scope, process timeline, engagement, criteria, deliberations on communities of interest, your draft maps, and ultimate, and the final map. It will include a section for your priorities and reflections we discussed earlier to help guide future redistricting efforts. And it's anticipated that the report will be released in the first half of September. The staff will work with the co-chairs just to finalize and have a review process, but also would accept any volunteers as well to help with that process. Are there any questions? Well, we haven't really gotten to the report outline itself, but are there any questions around the process? Commissioner Chisholm?
Yeah, a question for, for Linley, our city attorney. What legal meaning does this report have, if any? Does it, for example, imply our, I don't know, legislative intent, the intent of a, of a lawsuit? Or is this really just a memo to the future for what worked and what didn't work for us?
And so we're in a public meeting. My sense is that it probably would have some relevance in both settings.
Are there any concerns about having a report? Not saying any, but also, again, you will be able to shape it. This is your document. Don't have to write it as a body, as a full body, but it, it will reflect your work, what you've done. And it will also detail things that are documented and in the record and encapsulate how this process went. And also the, and so when California also had its first independent district commission, it was statewide, but they also produced a report that was helpful for guiding other processes around the country as well, including this one. So we'll walk through the current plan. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a few hands, and I jumped right past. Commissioner Fleishman, followed by Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Vincicco Robbins.
Yeah, so this is a process question. Our term of service ends when we complete our duties. So the map and the plant, the associated plan. But my understanding about how the process was just described is the report that will be issued will be subsequent to the termination of our actual term of service. To the termination of our actual term of service. So. Theoretically, we'll have no action on the necessarily of our of the entire commission. To have any kind of authoritative stamp placed on it, even though it is just the. Of the point of view of the commission. So. How are we handling that? Because what I heard was there may be a call or there will be a call for volunteers. That want to support the editorial process of the report. So that, so this is a little bit, this is a, think a variation on. Commissioner Chisholm's question about what? What kind of weight will that report cover if I've. Uh, uh, accurately described. The the process of its creation and issues.
So. The, so Commissioner Fleishman is correct. Uh, by statute, your terms do end. The day you take your final vote. The city of Portland will be officially issuing the report. Not the independent district commission, which at this point, at that point, will not be active, it will not exist. Until the next iteration of the independent district commission is stood up. So the city of Portland will be authoring the report. And at this point, you will be private citizens who would be in the position of volunteering to help form it. But you do have expert, like, but you did do the work, you do have the expertise. Um, and you could contribute to, again, you won't be drafting it. The drafting will be done by the city of Portland, the staff and the technical consultants who are still working and engaged on around the product, project. But as members of the commission did serve, you would have the capacity to be able to review it and help that process. And. We have hands from Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Vansicle Robbins, Commissioner Chisholm, and I believe Commissioner Manhadas, uh, Commissioner Hanson.
Um, I was going to go back to the report if we wanted to continue on that thread. I think I had thought that it was through the end of September. Yeah, so I actually just asked Linley, maybe she.
Okay, but I think in your council appointments, you were all appointed through the end of September, and so that's what I was originally referring to. But then looking back at the charter, we realized that once you finally adopt, the terms are over. And uh, Linley just confirmed that the charter uh, wins.
Um, well, I was just going to say in terms of the crafting of this report, I think one of the things that I heard from a number of folks in the public hearings this summer. Was a yearning for transparent communication around our process and pop process. So I think. In my mind, putting together this report is not only for the future independent district commission. Our redistricting commission, but also in response to that community feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Vansicle Robbins, followed by Commissioner Chisholm and Commissioner Manhadas.
Um, I just wanted to ask a question and make a comment. Um, so we had been kind of assigned. Different things to um, work on in the background of possible questions to include in FAQ. Um, uh. Components that might be um, uh, part of what we looked at, like I was asked to to. Uh, write up about neighborhoods and the role of neighborhoods. Um, and I'm just wondering, is there, who should all of that, the latest kind of compilation of any of that, who should that go to? So, yeah, okay. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to ask is. A lot of folks uh, in the public hearings asked about the data sets that we were using beyond the limited. Uh, amount of tables that were provided in the district or evaluation. And so I'm just wondering if. Um, we can make sure that some. Uh, selection of all of that is in uh, what the final report. Uh, includes so that all those folks can take a look at it.
Thank you, Commissioner Vansicle Robbins. We're actually, um. A little bit later, we have a slide that at least shows the the data that you presented to the public in the spring. That included some of the data sets that you were already starting to look at too. And then, of course, over time, you looked at many more too. And so we can include a kind of an inventory of different types of data. Commissioner Chisholm?
Yeah, so given that this report we written after we've adjourned and we will not be voting as a body to accept it, seems to me that it's not. Necessarily, um. A formal legal document in terms of our legislative attempt and perhaps might be best described as a a guide. To our deliberations, which, by the way, anybody could get by watching every one of these recordings. Um, you know, every word has been recorded of what we've done here. And so, uh, I don't know if there's a, there's a motion there or not, but it just strikes me that. That ought to be maybe even included in the report. This is not something that was formally adopted by this commission, but rather is seen as a summary, a staff created summary that's a guide. To the deliberations rather than a. The legislative Ted type. I I love the idea of doing this, memo to the future is a important thing, but. To clarify exactly what it is.
Um, I I do want to pause. Lonely, would you have any opposition to that if the rest, if the commission does agree to take that approach?
No, I think that's entirely appropriate.
Um, I'll. There was no formal motion on the table, but I. Is there any opposition to including a disclaimer that identifies the staff as authoring it as I described before? The city of Portland staff has authored this and is a reflection that includes information that was made available during the commission's actual tenure.
And just to clarify, this is different from the like formal legal description, or just like the formal description that will be part of the actual district plan that we actually vote on next night.
Correct. That you will need to approve with as part of the district plan. And Commissioner Manhadas.
Yeah, I was going to build on the exact same point and to say, I think summary of what happened is probably the most appropriate approach, but would just. Ask as that's being drafted by staff that. Uh, I feel like guide is still sort of more subjective and it's giving sort of voice to staff in a way that I'm not sure staff would be comfortable with. So I think that. It's important, yes, to say staff drafted this, but I, if that summary of what happened could be sourced back to things that are in the public record so that we aren't getting. Things that are outside of, like, once we adjourn, I don't think that information should be added after that, um, because we won't have. An opportunity to approve it as a body. That said, I do think there's opportunity to have like a structure that allows for. Um, specific sentiments to be attributed to specific commissioners, right? I think that's totally fine for folks to speak in their individual capacity. I think it's just making sure that it's. Uh, sourcing back, because I I would be concerned. I mean, we can call it a summary, a guide, whatever, but I do think just like. Being really disciplined about that is important because this is a very political conversation and I think they're. You know, it is subject to legal challenges, so just making sure that we're just not putting things out there that could get confused. I'm also, um. Sensitive to perception too around not having things in there that aren't sourced back to the public record because then. The perception is conversations or decisions were happening that were outside of this problem, you know what I mean? So I think anything we can do to sort of like. Nip that in the bud would be really important. So just being very, very. It's like you're like writing a law review article, like just layers, layers, um. It'd be really good, because I do think it's really valuable to capture the process, but being really disciplined about not adding sort of the. Um, like more subjective language to it later is, I think, really important.
I did have one question on attribution and Kimmy. Of flow analytics, I do see your hand, um, but before we get, uh. Is there any interest in having individual commissioners attributed, reflections attributed? Versus having a more anonymized approach to any personal reflections?
I like the anonymize, like, you know, when you take minutes for tend to keep people's names and you just say, you know, there was discussion around this. Um, that feels.
That feels better to me.
That would be for reflections. If it's in the minutes and it's already attributed, we can.
Right.
It there.
But if in a, like a summary report or guide to the future.
I'm starting to answer. Okay, I'm starting to think of it as like a, it's like a commission wide version of the fabulous public comment report. Right? So there's like the raw data of like a thousand public comments from the summer that was like beautifully synthesized into the themes. Of ten pages. Um, and so this is like, you know, all of the hours of all of the recordings and all the reflections and conversations and everything just sort of like distilled. Um. In a similar way and conceptualizing it that way is clarifying and feels good to me.
And I think just having an appendix that is robust with all that information. Um, so that's kind of the project for staff. It's like, if we're going to add something that's attributed to the commission, just making sure there's something in there. And I agree, like, keeping it general in the report makes more sense.
So I had a couple of hands come up with this discussion, so take those and then Kimmy, I promise. Uh, Commissioner Chisholm and then Commissioner Vansicle Robbins.
I concur with all of that. I would say that there's a difference, though, in a way to think about this is. Anything about the rationale for how we approve this map really ought to be sourced back to the public record and really ought to be the. Conversation that's reflected in our public operations. Other stuff like. Our recommendations for how a future commission might hold public hearings and what neighborhoods to hold them in or. How many meetings we got to do or how much time we have to do do this work and not just in six months, like all of those kinds of things, sure, like. Which would be the individuals. That stuff's not to be very particularly relevant to what we've done, um. But rather, it's just sort of guide to the future. So I would say one is pretty tight and the other is much looser in terms of approach.
And Commissioner Vansicle Robbins?
Um, uh, just as a follow on, it seems to me like if we are going to be finishing our term on Monday. And this is going to be drafted subsequently. I don't have any problem with providing um, input about, you know, lessons learned or suggestions that we might. Have about public engagement or things like that that we've learned. But I would, I would want it to be all anonymized together. Um, because we won't have a chance to, I mean, we won't be editing it each of us, um, and so we wouldn't have our names associated. Uh, with that process, so. And I think that's simple enough to do, um, to just do it that way.
Commissioner Lumley?
Uh, thank you. Just a simple recommendation that once the draft is produced, you could share it with the commissioners to see if anybody. Has an opportunity to review and comment on it. Thank you.
I talk about thumbs up for that. And I, and I saw a head nod from Sophia who says that we can do that. Me.
Yeah, so just, I want to just uh, chime in here just really quickly. I think that the idea of this report was really about broad strokes, um, and not naming names or, you know, anything individualized. At all. Um, I would love it if folks did have a chance to take a look at it before we finalize it. Um, we, um. So we'll be producing the report, um, in house at flow. We have a team of graphic designers and. A team of copy editors and some other things that it'll go, it will go through before it comes to you. So I think, um, if you do have any, a chance to take a look at it, it would be very, very helpful.
Thank you, Kimmy. So. I think we can kind of move to where the staff is currently. Kind of outlining the content, you can kind of get a sense of what that structure will look like. And then we'll look to see if there are any gaps, anything you'd like to focus on in particular, and then we have some specific areas that we. Would really like your feedback on, especially. I'm just trying to progress the slide, if you get to it. Uh, so here we have the charter, the current outline. So start with, um, the actual, so encapsulating the actual decision, so that would include the elements of the district plan. Um, laying out how this commission was formed via a voter approved ballot measure. And this how in the selection of you as commissioners as well as your bios. Uh, we'll also go back, uh, the report is, plan is to also go back to your original founding documents that encapsulated your goals. Uh, the stated, well, the stated objective and the purpose of the commission itself as your kind of your charge, but as well as your values. Um, and your purpose for being here. We'll move into the criteria of the maps, including. This can, this probably be, it's worth the beginning, but also what the mandated criteria were, again, that would be outlined in the voter ballot. But then also your process for, uh, eventually, which culminated with voting to not add any additional criteria. There'll be an overview of districtor just to provide background from the technical perspective on the tool itself, and then um, an outline of the public engagement process. Um, that would, and then that would be followed by, uh, how communities of interest throughout the city provided input throughout the process. Uh, working through, which should serve as the kind of higher umbrella for the discussion of the draft maps process, going through each of those. Um, including the stated priorities and you, you encapsulated a lot of this already. Uh, in language that was used in the July hearings. And so the, the plan is to pull, again. Pulling back to the actual content that's already in the record. Um, around the pro, uh, around the priorities process and the descriptions of those maps. Similarly, for the public hearings, how you approach those, the process and the input of the public, and then get to your final map. For in, as you will state, uh, hopefully, the rationale, uh, as you tie, we're going to ask you to tie back to the criteria. For your rationale around priorities process, um, and forming a description of those maps. And then this, there's this final section around your reflections, any reflections that you do want to share, recommendations. Um, and just, uh, any reflections around the process and your experience with the commission that you'd like to be included in that report. And I think we've, general consensus is that. Will work from the sense that that would be anonymized information, um, especially as this, you wouldn't be sharing it. Kind of in a, like, very, like, on the record situation. I mean, some of them you will share on the record, but most of it will be up and on last.
Can I, um, I mean, it seems to me just the way it's organized, like the commissioner reflections would be sort of an opt-in process where people would say. I want to put this on the record, you can put my name next to it, or you can say anonymous commissioner. I just want to make sure there's no confusion there about it being sort of general sentiments of the. Commission.
That is correct. So the plan for this is that it is a, it would be a separate and distinct section within the report. Um, that would be, it is clear that this is not a set of recommendations at, from the cap, from the commission's perspective. You would not be in this section speaking as a body, but you would be. So it's opting in to sharing your personal reflections as commissioners if you would like to. You can do some of that today, that of course will be in the minutes, um, but you can also do that. Via a survey that you'll receive in your inbox as well, and I believe that that should be arriving tomorrow. So the, so I'll pause there. And ask if there are any kind of at a high level, is anything missing? Or would you like any clarification on any points here? Commissioner Fleishman, followed by Commissioner Lorente.
I'd like to go back to Commissioner Hanson's observation around. Uh, how to frame kind of the the reflections piece. Um, we've already given, we've already filled out one survey after the public hearings. There, so there's, there's already kind of a growing. Uh, body of data, uh, of views that can be used, so. I just want to endorse what Commissioner Hanson said, which is. If staff can go through those and, um, not only say a commissioner observed. In that anonymous, but but numerous commissioners. You know, like what, what some of those themes that came out, I'm sure there are some. Uh, you know, more robust, uh, community engagement and communication being. One of them or multiple language, you know, outreach and multiple languages through multiple means. Whatever that might be, that if a number of us provide that feedback. Uh, that there be a way to characterize that as. You know, not official, but but several, numerous, many. However, however that gets framed.
As a reminder, so the record, this is not even going to be exhaustive as I say it, but it will include the minutes, but also the video. Your jam boards, um, the public, and you also have the public hearings themselves. Uh, there are documents that you presented to the public, the form of the district plan, but also, um, in the form of. Not just what you said in those public hearings, but also the presentation and the overview, right? There is this wealth of content. Um, that we can build from, and I think to the earlier points that we can cite as well. As source material. Commissioner Laurentet, followed by Commissioner Wise.
Yeah, I just wanted to also elevate what Commissioner Vansical Robbins had said earlier about sharing some of the data sets with the public that were used to inform some of the criteria. I'm sure that's envisioned as a component of the. Item five criteria for maps, but as we're looking at that outline, I just want to make sure that's called out specifically either as a point or a subpoint of that. Because I feel like that's also very important to share.
I can probably take credit for the condensed version of this outline. Version is. Quite detailed. This is a synthesized, this is a synthesized version and so, and we do have, and again, we do have a slide that has at least like the starting point of what your data sets were. But we can also call back to. The other source. Okay, like we have also reports from Flow Analytics too, that can be referenced as well. Commissioner Wise?
Yeah, and you know. This might be included in the notes, but I thought it might be. Helpful for the public to just have a set of all the, all the votes taken. I, I, I think it helps tell our story. In terms of like the values that we've done as a commission.
You can share.
Just add, if I can, we do have a log of all motions and votes that you've made, but there are some, for example, albina, right? We never formally voted. On that, so we'll try our best to add that, those reflections as well.
Is there like a postmortem for the trether commission? Was there a similar report that we should look at to get a sense of?
Yeah, that was the report that Lumley was referencing earlier.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have the link for the trether commission's report handy, just in case folks do want to. Skim it as a reference point? Oh, it's already.
I'll post it here. There's two versions.
Yes, I see. I saw it earlier, right? And. There will also be an appendix in the report that's cited, and that will include the data references as well. Okay. So the bolded sections, so for the rest of the time for the discussion, we'd like to specifically focus on the kind of the bolded elements here. The commissioner reflections, that is again, is optional. If you want to weigh in on it now, you can. That's not a problem. We'll also have expanded time next week if you would like to share them. But we really do want to focus on these first two bolded points. Reviewing the criteria for the maps and really tying back that rationale and like all of your thoughts that went into that. As well as how you're processing community, uh, input from communities of interest throughout the process. So. We move to. And I'm going to do two slides at once and then we'll come back to this one. Not two slides at once, but two slides in a row, then we'll, we'll come back to this one. So just to review the district, the criteria. That. You used, these were mandated and you did not add additional ones. So, starting with on the left. Ensuring that each district as nearly as practical, practicable is contiguous and compact. Utilizes existing geographic or political boundaries. Does not divide communities of, of common interest. Is, uh, they are connected by transportation links and are of equal population. I'm going to pause there. Commissioner Valdini?
I just have a quick question. I'm not quite sure if it's great for the final report, but I, I don't know what to do with this information that I have. So. Uh, one of the neighborhoods is under the impression that's, you know, they. With the map, we've drawn something bad, right? They will be ignored. Based on my knowledge of our new electoral system now. I can confidently point to science literature and say, no, we won't, and here's why. So they asked me to write up a document and I wrote it up, but I've been sitting on it because I didn't want to do anything bad. So I don't know what to do with it because it's very much like, here's how the electoral system is going to work with three reps per district. Here's why your neighborhood is going to be okay. So I don't know. What to do with that. Is that, where does that go? Or should I just ignore the neighborhood and just keep it to myself?
All right, I think you're allowed to communicate on your own. On your own, on your own behalf.
Would that be appropriate? Is that the right thing to do?
Well, I will say we are, um. We're going to talk, talk about it later, but we've invited folks from the government transition advisory committee to come. Our next meeting to share some kind of transition handoff priorities or reflections about. Community engagement or voter education. So I think that could be an appropriate body to share some of those. Of priorities around, or especially around voter education to help address maybe some of those concerns.
So I'll just like bring it next week and. Raise it then. Thank you.
I, I was just going to say that I think after this, this over, there's going to be a whole phase of voter education that's going to be happening. And I think having that. Just multiple ways of explaining this is going to be really important, especially if you have connections to those communities specifically. I know that people, everybody here is probably going to be engaged in that different ways. So I think offering that to the city, I think is a great way to help them sort of like. Demystify the process a little bit, but it seems like the next phase to me.
As Autumn pointed out. Once the gamble falls on this process, we're private citizens. You're welcome to talk to anybody you want, about whatever you want.
Any other? Thoughts before we resume? Now these. Commissioner Kamora?
When we were doing the outreach. And let me put my hand down before I forget. There was a slide that talked about. The voter ed, Voting Act. And I think. Even though it's. It's kind of implied. That explanatory slide should also be included as part of the district criteria. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I believe, I believe we produced that. I can't remember if that was from the flow, but we will go back and find that slide. Right, and I believe it's the one. Was in one of the early meetings, the first or second, and I think we also covered considerations around cracking and packing and. That was more of like an educational piece for all of us too. Hopeful for voter education. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vansical Robbins?
Well, I guess one of, one of my. I guess learnings with respect to all of the district criteria is that. I feel like we got a lot of feedback. About how is it that we are. Going to meet each and every one of these criteria? And are we going to be able to meet them all equally? And we had people who would submit maps. And titled them, you know. Exact population equality, you know, that they were focused on having zero deviation. We have had all kinds of. Comments back to us about what constitutes communities of common interest. There are, there are a wide array of things, array of things that people provided us. And I'm wondering if Katie might be able to just take all of the. Eight hundred and eleven comments or whatever it was. And synthesize from those, all of the different varieties of communities of common interest that were mentioned or suggested. And then also be able to tie back the data sets, the many data sets that we looked at. And how those data sets helped us look at something like diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. You know, you take a look at where people live and where concentrations are. And what your maps might do to cut those concentrations into pieces. So all of those things, because I don't think people who weren't spending a lot of time with the maps. Have an intuitive sense of how there's a lot of tension between these criteria as you start to work with them. And you have to make. Waiting decisions about how you're going to. Work with them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Chisholm?
Yeah, and then jumping off from that, you know, we, we've recently received as a commission, some feedback from. Some neighborhoods that are upset with our decisions here and. I think the thing is I, as much as I agree with it. You know, I prefer the maple map. But here we are, and. I think there's a, there was a misuse or a misunderstanding. Of the term criteria. We have a very limited set of criteria. Katie goes back, is on the slide here. That's it. But then, and there are an infinite number of maps, as we all know, that meet these criteria. And so once we had to go settle ourselves down to one map. Three and then one. You know, the key is to. Is that we have to apply all the other values. In our experience, that's why we're all here. If there was a technocratic. You know, computerized answer that is, you know, algebraically correct. Use a computer to do this. We have humans here because you have to weigh values and. You know, I appreciate the feedback we got from the public, uh, from those neighborhoods that are upset. But, but you know, we've done a good job here and. We've met the criteria and we applied our, our logic. So what I don't like, that's okay. That's how it goes.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we're going to go to the. The right side of the screen, which lays out more of the, you're not supposed to do, so. We're in the negative. No district will be drawn for the purpose of favoring any political party, incumbent, elected official or other person. And no district will be drawn for the purpose of diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. But those, so those were the district criteria. If we move to the next slide, this is mostly just to. I think just to encapsulate some points around the data that were presented and then all the different types of data that. Were and could be considered, there were even more beyond this, but this is again, this was presented to the public in, during the spring public hearing. So. For instance, for contiguous and compactness. Contiguing compactness, it was a potentially spatial assessment. But kind of one of those things, I think the test was, you kind of know it when you see it. But you, when you layer it with the other district criteria, you could use school districts and neighborhood association, business districts. Forest Park and Mullam and I, I four as geographic political boundaries, as well as places of interest. Uh, not dividing communities of common interest. You took much, you took a good deal of input and much of this is not. Quantitative data, though it could be backed up by quantitative, quantitative data, but it also included some qualitative data as well. Being connected by transportation links, looked at aerial roadways and streets and max lines and other transportation corridors such as bus routes. Uh, using the deviation metric to assess equal population, but using the 2020 census data as required. As well as the American Community Survey. Uh, and then finally, not drawing the lines for the purpose of diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority. Again, that could be backed by the 2020 census and the American Community Survey. Again, the report will include in the appendix, the data sources and we can, will have all of the data requests also that Flow Analytics fulfilled throughout the process as well. And if you would like to share any that you may have used as well in your individual consultations, you can provide that info to staff. So. If we go back to the original slide. Or go forward a technical. Uh, and sorry, actually, before we do that, Kimmy.
So just for clarity, um, too, so. We obviously can put in images of the maps that we use and images of data sets that were overlaid on maps and things like that. But for the other data sets, we will be naming them and not necessarily putting in appendices of all of the census data or anything like that. So I just want to make sure that that's clear and no one's surprised when that's not in the report.
Okay, can you repeat that again? I didn't follow it. So you will not be, you would not include like the census, the census, uh, uh, data in the appendix, but you could include. Map images?
Right, so. So for instance, when we mapped. The transportation lines, right? Like we can screenshot that, we can put it in the report. But to get the source data that that came from or to get the source data from the census would simply be really difficult and bulky. And so we'll name data sets that we did use, like the census data or school district lines and things like that.
That's a good clarification. I'm not trying to break servers. You don't break servers, you overlook them? I don't know.
Sure.
Commissioner Lumley? You did. Commissioner Lum, there you go.
Looking at this criteria. I remember when we were first starting towards the beginning, I thought, looking at this, oh my gosh, how are we going to get here? And we heard so much testimony about how strongly neighborhood associations felt about being kept whole. But we knew going into this process that some are going to be upset that they were not connected to their neighbors because we have to draw a line somewhere. And standing back and looking at the map that we are completing here. It does a very good job of keeping neighborhood associations whole. And so for, for that, I think that the groups that advocated for that actually. Should be pleased with that kind of success. At least I hope they would. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kamora?
I actually have a comment and I'm not sure where to put it. We heard from a lot of neighborhood associations and some other community groups. But. I don't feel like we heard from enough communities. That were not. Part of the official. Normal stuff that the city sends notification to. And. When I went to Monday's meeting. They had a whole different set of data based on. Not the census data, but extrapolated data, which I feel like we can't use because that's not. We don't, we are legally bound to use 2020 census data. But is there a note that can be put in saying? These data sets are based on the 2020 census. There are other data sets that are available. That we were aware of, but we couldn't. Basically use them. Except. As to make individual negotiations. I just think that. There's a lot of stuff that we missed. And not intentionally, but I think we did miss it. And we heard some from, specifically from neighborhood associations. But. I don't think we heard from enough other community groups. And I do not know if. They didn't have an opinion, they don't care about your opinion. Or we didn't know how to reach them, or we tried the best we could, but there was no takers kind of stuff. I think that footnote needs to be on there somewhere because otherwise they're going to say, but we're not on this. Criteria. So that means you didn't want my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kamora. Um, and as a clarification, I think, you know, we can note that the. The commission was required to use the population data from the 2020 census. You, you did and were allowed to use other data sources to, to layer on top of that. The population figures did need to come from the census. And, and also that as a reflection. Can be included as well. Your, the personal reflection around outreach and hearing from communities of interest and not hearing from some can also be included as well. Commissioner Vansical Robbins?
I guess maybe, Kimmy, you were already planning to do this, but in ArcJust, there was a whole like forty. Like there were forty different overlays of data that we were able to put on the maps. Um, and maybe that could just be an appendix that listed all of the ones that we did have. In our toolkit. And people could suggest going forward if there are others that would be, they think would be useful in the future for folks to, uh, include.
Thank you, Commissioner. So. Looking at the district criteria and thinking about how you took in input from communities of interest. Are there other points that you'd specifically like to be included around that helped to encapsulate your rationale? If any, any or all of the criteria. So we've talked about, for instance, having to balance. Trying to achieve the criteria as much as practical. Right? Are there specific, and there was also a reflection around working to keep neighborhoods whole as communities of interest. Are there other considerations that you'd like to discuss here and have potentially included in the report? Commissioner Joe?
So. In the presentation. Even if that's part of the criteria.
we emphasize communities of common interests. And the challenge that that posed is somehow we were supposed to define what communities of common interests were and apply that definition. I think if you go around a table now and there's thirteen, fourteen of the IDC, you're going to get at least twenty-two different responses of what. Because of that, it's a little frustrating to think that we're going to conclude this work. And there's going to be a summary document that's developed by staff when it was the IDC commissioners who sat and had multiple conversations with communities, wrestled with these questions, both in written form, verbal form, throughout the month of July and even still. But assembly of knowledge. I think we've got to find a better way to capture that than to take a survey and pass it on to staff members and say, you guys bullet point this and see what happens. It just doesn't feel right. Now, this work, if any of the criteria was most challenging, it was to do that because it is that, and it's it's an inaugural phase of, of trying to establish the relationships between communities. It was asking the question of what is common interest? And how far out does it radiate? What is the weight of it? And who do you want to team up with to prioritize and work on that common interest? And it just feels like if we walk away from this without elevating the challenges with that or making it sound as if there wasn't challenges and deficits that need to be corrected. Then it just feels like it's all was very perfunctory.
Commissioner Judd? So I think we do want to use, you know, the current time that we have certainly and have had in this meeting, but also next week's meeting to have that reflection as a bigger picture. The, from a legal perspective, I think the limitations around the term does present some challenges. But I think we can do our best to try to capture as much of the nuance of your positions, not just as individuals, I think, but also potentially as a body too, especially in encapsulating that rationale and the complexities that you did wrestle with. And I think it's never going to be the same when staff who are not in your heads try to go to the record and what you said, but also much of what wasn't said, right, in, in rooms, but try to capture that. But I think this is where we do our best to capture those nuances. And again, as you said, there are thirteen of you, but potentially dozens of different ways that you're looking at communities of interest. And we do need to be able to communicate as much as we can of that, that wrestling as we can.
I appreciate that as a, unfortunately, I don't, I don't, I think that there's an opportunity for us to do better. I think acknowledging the fact, I mean, if we continue to say it wasn't enough time, therefore this happened, without saying, if we had more time, this is what we would do. If we had more resources, this is what we would do. Then we, we, again, this feels very perfunctory. It's not enough just to say, oh, well, you know, we fulfilled the criteria and we just, we just kind of ran out of time. But that just doesn't. Yeah, it's something wrong with it.
Commissioner Manhara did raise her hand. So I'm going to go with Commissioner Manhara, followed by Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Chisholm, and then Commissioner Kamora.
Great, um, I have a related reflection that I wasn't really sure where to put it, but I think it actually touches on that a little bit. So I want to point out that what's interesting about this process, and it should be like elevated somewhere in the report, is that we weren't going through a normal districting process. Like, these are unique districts. This is, these are multi-member districts. They're very large districts. And that's pretty unique across the country. And that was by design because of issues in how populations, particularly language and ethnic minority populations, are dispersed across the cities. So going back to the origins of this entire design, it was really organized to address that out the gate. What I think is really interesting, having participated in that original process and then kind of seeing how it played out through this districting process, is that it sort of pushed the focus into the communities of common interest place because we weren't dealing, grappling with the same issues that some folks who do single member districts or smaller districts have to deal with or who have more diverse populations have to deal with around the, aside not to like mess up or the note side here. It created a lot of like focus on communities of common interest. And just want to elevate from my perspective. I fully agree that there's always more to do around engagement. I don't think any process is perfect. But I think part of the thing to recognize with communities of common interest is it is also by design a publicly driven criteria. Like, it's never going to be perfectly defined. Like, that's the purpose of it. Part of it is you have to let go of control to the community to have some self-determination and say, I identify as a community of common interest. Because this process is so, all of that said, it, so there's like a connection there with community engagement. And I think because this process is so new, we're sort of in a situation right now of like the early, like, history origin story of how people define themselves in Portland as communities of common interest. And historically, you know, we have different communities of common interests that we're familiar with, and we had to really rely on that because of the limitations around engagement. But the neighborhood associations are sort of set up that way. So it's sort of elevated like a snapshot in time of where Portland's at. But I can imagine over time, and even by 2030, just given what I know about Portland, people are going to learn. Like, they're going to learn really fast that communities of common interest is where the game is. And I can imagine people starting to organize and identify themselves, themselves in, in ways that we can't even predict at this point, which I think is actually going to be really interesting and is a really kind of cool democracy experiment. As somebody who has like, I want it to be, you know, this is the criteria, it's just never going to be that. And I think it, it'll just be interesting to see what, what this looks like in 2030. Because I do think it's going to, as people start to engage more with the process and we have a few elections behind us, people are going to start to organize a little bit differently under the same criteria. And it might actually result in very different looking districts. So just wanted to elevate that because I think that it's, we just had a little bit of a different experience than what I've seen in other, personally in other districting processes, just given the nature of the like project in front of us. And I, I think it's kind of fun and it's really frustrating.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Kamora, Commissioner Judd, and Commissioner Chisholm. Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, so this is going to be related to both of these previous comments. I think I had been thinking about this report as more like the audience being either my members of the public who are interested in the process or the next commission in 2030. But I'm, I'm also wondering if there is an element of it that could be like the audience of either like the people who are going to be running in 2024, like elected in 2024, or like kind of thing, just like general reflections on like what this moment means for this city and what we have heard overall. Because I think to Commissioner Judd's point, like so much of what we talked about with community engagement is like, how, how does this new system and structure actually build new trust in, in the city government and like build more involvement in such a way that like a one and done, like, okay, great, you came to a meeting and now we're not going to talk to you in 10 years, is like not actually helpful? It's like, how do we have this be the beginning of something? And so it doesn't feel perfunctory. And so we can actually, sort of our recommendations for the people taking the baton, whether that's GTAC, whether that's, whether that's the folks running in 2024, these themes we heard around like this yearning for collaboration, like this yearning for like working together and actually being able to share, share some of that in like a really highlighted way as well. Because I think it's been a great moment to sort of get a pulse of like what people are thinking and feeling and wanting to pass that baton.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kamora?
Thank you. I have to agree with Commissioner Judd that the, hopefully, the real end result is a better way to do this based on what we have learned in this, this, over this summer. I understand it's not perfect. And we heard all, we heard all too often that communities of color were not considered. And how do you explain that? Well, there's only like 500 of you. So while you are a community of common interest, that's not enough for me to be using that as a criteria for moving the boundary, which is what sometimes I felt like. And, and I think that that's a very frustrating thing. But that also doesn't allow an entree for that community to feel like they, they have a right to engage in the process because they were dismissed. So I, I think we've got to put in some way of saying, in, in future, there's a way of doing it better. And maybe we get better data? Or maybe we get maybe more data? But on Monday's meeting, they had a whole different set of datas. And they didn't use anything different other than the census data. So the extrapolation is really the issue. And I think we need to be mindful of that. There are different data sets that we didn't capture. And how do we add that in to our process? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Judd, followed by Commissioner Chisholm. And I'm sorry, we're, we're nearing time and we do have to wrap up with next steps. So probably have Commissioner Chisholm be the last comment, unless there are some quick ones to wrap us up. Commissioner Judd?
Yeah, I love following Commissioner Kamora because she always hits on the right one. I think one of these we've been struggling with and door community engagement was that the most organized communities showed up repeatedly and made up and contributed. The challenge was, and remains, how do you get to those voices that are typically disenfranchised? So Commissioner Ford talked about ethnic minorities. There is homeless and houselessness that we, there isn't an infrastructure to really hear and engage that section of the community. And yet, we see very, so if we're looking at the eastern, those two districts where there is low voter turnout historically, there are probably some structural things that create barriers for that, for the right level of engagement. So we've heard some of those things. We've seen some of those things in which those barriers need to be torn down and more access needs to be developed. So without leaving that as a as a signature or as a learning that this is what we can do better, my concern is by 2030, that gap, that the consolidation of those organized groups would only get that much greater. By 2030, those voices that lack an infrastructure now will be only that much more disenfranchised participation in 2030.
Thank you, Commissioner Judd. Commissioner Chisholm?
Yeah, just real briefly, I agree we should do everything we can to include the public more and have a longer process and involve more people. I just also want to really celebrate that this districting commission process has engaged in an enormous amount of public engagement, far more than any other districting effort ever in the history of Oregon. Now, the legislature doesn't do, they have a few hearings here and there. I was just trying to figure out, you know, like, what more am I going to commission not to pick on them? But I believe the auditor posted a map and had an online questionnaire available for a month. Um, you know, we did a whole lot of public hearings. Thirteen of us, fourteen, fifteen of us went out into the public and talked to a lot, a lot of people. This has been an extremely public process. If I'm always just the like happy-go-lucky guy, but I think we did an incredible job of reaching out to the public. We could do better. Hopefully, the next group will do a lot more and a lot better. But this has been the most open and public and engaged for districting process in the history of the state.
Thank you, Commissioners. And Commissioner Vinceicle Robbins, can you close this out with a?
I just would like to say one thing, and that is that this issue of community engagement and unheard voices is not just our issue. The city of Portland needs to have a concerted effort that spans everything they do, everything they want public feedback on, everything that they think is going to impact the public in ways that they either surprise them or makes them unhappy. And for one-off commissions to try and fix this is a, it's a fool's errand. It's not going to happen. So the entire city council and all of the bureaus need to really make this priority number one, or this city's population is not going to have any better opinion of them than they do right now. So I think it's just something they have to take extremely seriously.
Thank you, Commissioners. So we're going to pick this conversation back up on Monday evening in our final district commission meeting, August 21st, 2023, running from six to eight PM. So that will be our final, and we'll have that discussion. But before we do that, at the start of the meeting, we'll vote on the district, the legal, the whole district plan that includes the map, the numbers, and the legal description. And have a final adoption of the district plan. We'll walk through that process, that voting process in that meeting just right beforehand so we're all clear. And I realize I wasn't actually supposed to take this slide, but. And on August 22nd, the staff will file the district plan that y'all adopt with the city elections officer and with the city elections officer. And then as described before, the staff will focus on drafting that report. We will again pick up this discussion. Now, now that I've stepped on. Commissioner Judd, also Lumley?
Can I just clarify really quickly? I don't think we're going to need a separate vote on the district legal description. I think we can just have a vote on the plan as a whole, unless there are edits that people need to make to the legal description, then we need to do that separately. But I kind of doubt it.
No, and, and you are correct. That was actually, that was revised on the slide, but it, it's an outdated slide. So that was, that's a mistake there. When I stated it, I skipped that part. Clearly, you got it because you're a good lawyer. Commissioner Hanson?
Will we see a copy of what will be voted on in advance of the meeting?
And I believe the timeline for, you're, you're saying the district plan that would be upper adoption? I believe the timeline for that is, we get as soon as possible. ASAP, but definitely before the meeting.
It mostly won't be human readable. This is to try and include the following census blocks.
And sorry, Commissioner Judd, since I stepped on your slide, do you have anything to add to close this out? Okay. And again, meeting will be on Monday evening, from six to eight. And with that, we are adjourned.